Councilor, we're ready for session meeting to order for July 28th, 2015. Please stand and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the like of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does everyone who came in sign in outside? Okay. Thank you. So we will start with any public comment. Do we have people in the audience who would like to make any comments?
Is this the time?
Please stand and give your name.
Jan Wright, I'm in Lakeview. Is this the time to talk about the interim mayor position? Public comment?
Well, if you have a comment, now is the time.
Well, I stand in support of Mike Warren. Actually, I brought a letter with me from a resident here, Lynette Smith. I don't know if the council would like me to read it in support of Mike. Shall I read it?
Yes, how long is it?
Okay.
Go ahead if you would like.
Thank you. I would like to give my support for Mike Warren to be Lakeview's next mayor. It was exciting to hear he was interested with regards to Mayor Patrick, who would be missed. With so few people qualified, capable, and willing to do the job, Mike Warren's interest needs to be seriously considered by all looking for a positive progressive future for Lakeview. Mike is very qualified due to his time with the town council, his varied civic experience here in his profession in broadcasting. Few people know as many people on the issues as well as Mike. I have known Mike Warren and his family for many years and feel so grateful for their concern and kindness toward me and my family and countless others during times of need. Having attended St. Luke's Episcopal Church here in Lakeview with my now deceased mother, Mike and Pam were some of the first people I met. I was always impressed with their friendly, generous ways and how they offered to help my elderly mother when I was away. Over the years, I would see Mike out in the community with a strong sense of town spirit and concern, always willing to take time for conversation with people from all walks of life. Being mayor is a big demanding task and someone takes someone dedicated to the needs and current concerns of the town. Mike has the enthusiasm and knowledge of the current social and economic situation here that our new mayor should have. Thank you and best of luck to Mike Warren in his quest to be mayor of Lakeview, Oregon. Signed, Lynette Smith. Would you like to have it for the record?
Please.
And then I have a comment also. We live in a community that embraces the past. It's important to remember our roots, but we mustn't be bullied out by ideas and enterprises that are unfamiliar. I stand in support of Mike Warren as interim mayor. From my occasional attendance at town hall meetings and the newspaper reporting of them, I see Mike as an independent and progressive thinker while being a team player. And I'd also like to add to Lynette's letter that Mike is very proactive out in the community. I saw him at the fair with the booth encouraging people to come and talk to him. And I know that he has a lot of dialogue with folks here. And that's one of the things that I really admired about Mayor Patrick was his door-to-door campaigning. I really liked that a lot. And I'm very, very grateful for all the council members. I think all of your talents have been outstanding. So, that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes? Please stand and go over there.
Joanna Dixon. I would also like to speak in support of Mike Warren. I'm going to read my letter and then I'll submit. Dear fellow citizens of Lakeview, I've known Mike Warren for seven years. As a member of St. Luke's Episcopal Church, he has been elected to three offices, one currently as representative to a semin school in Cove, Oregon. The church always desires his presence in offices and on committees because of his knowledge and his calm and fair consideration of all views. His knowledge in both practical and political matters is well-known and respected. He is well-spoken and diplomatic in all his dealings. Above all, Mike is ethical, honest, and gracious in his speech and actions. He represents us with dignity and wisdom. He is known for his integrity and his ever-present willingness to serve. We also benefit from these qualities that Mike brings to his position in the town council. Our community has changed over the years, bringing diversity to our citizenry. Change can feel unsettling at times, but it can also bring renewal and growth, and we should be open to it. Mike is knowledgeable of our needs and capable of representing all citizens with equity and respect. I think, I can think of no better one to represent our community as mayor than Mike Warren. And I would also like to add some words that may be familiar to all of us. The Old Testament man looks on the outward appearance, but God looks on the heart. And this heart is very capable, knowledgeable, and willing to serve us. And I would like, if you would have that up for me to do that. Thank you so much.
Do you have anyone else who'd like to have your comment?
Ann Henderson. That's an infomer on for your true value. I'd like to speak out in support of Mike Warren as well. I don't have a prescription or anything, but I have seen Mike in the community. And he is very, I just really support him.
Okay. That's good. Thank you. The gentleman was...
Jim Gullickson, Hunter's Oats Springs, just in support of Mike Warren. I watch a lot of YouTube of the meetings here. I don't count all of them, but, and he conducts himself very well, and I think he'd be a fine asset to the city.
Okay, thank you.
Dee Benson. I didn't come here prepared to say anything, but I would like to see Sandy Wensel run for me.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Thank you all for your comments and letters. Next on our agenda is communications and information items. We have a thank you letter from Lake County Chamber of Commerce and a Red Rock Biopil's customer update. So, any questions or comments on those also?
Mayor, I'm here, but...
Counsel.
President. What I would like to do is also, I don't know if I understand right-handed this out beforehand, I didn't get fairies during the public commentary, if that's appropriate and somebody could read it.
Oh, yes, I can go ahead and do that. We do have, I'm sorry. We have a letter here that was given to the town council from Susan Cahill, addressed to Lakeview Town Council. Dear council members, Mike Warren informed me that he had submitted his name for consideration in filling the vacant mayor's position. In business dealings with Mike, I've always found him to be honest and trustworthy with the interests of this community at heart. I think he would make a very good mayor. Mike has been told that five people have voiced objections to Mike filling the position, three because of his affirmative vote concerning marijuana dispensaries, and two because he has long hair. I'd like to point out that the vote taken on the dispensaries was a majority vote of the council, and after all, that is our democratic process. I also think discriminating against him because he has long hair is just downright un-American. After all, we still have some rights left in this country. I'd like to point out that the owner of the True Value Store, who has made a major investment contributing to the revitalization of Lakeview, has long hair. I am hoping that the council will disregard these unfair statements and choose a mayor based on merits. I am not able to attend the council meeting, however, I respectfully request that this letter be read to all the meeting, all at the meeting. Thanks for your consideration, Susan Cahill. All right. We have the consent calendar consisting of regular session minutes from the July 14th meeting.
I would like to make a motion that we accept the minutes from the council meeting of July 14th as written.
On favor, we have a motion to approve the consent calendar. On the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mayor, council, and manager updates. I did attend a Saturday market meeting a week and a half ago, and they are doing business pretty really well this summer so far. And I attended a past meeting of prison advisory committee at the prison last week. The news is pretty good from the prison. They are still supervising many felonies, but they have filled most of the vacancies except for two sergeant positions. And budget is coming soon, and they're hoping for some increases. And one of the things that was very interesting was that they had what they refer to as an enhanced visitation during this past summer. And this is where they allow relatives, family, children to come to the prison, and they are able to communicate openly in the yard and in the rec hall, dining hall, I think it was, with prisoners. And it's been studies have proven that that is really a great thing for prisoners. They had 132 visitors and 80 prisoners taking part in it. So that was very interesting. And they are also working to improve their physical exercise for the employees as health and relieving stress and communicating with each other during that time. So, that was my report. Sharon?
I attended a senior citizen board meeting. Some significant problems, I think, with keeping them financially viable, but there's a lot of work going on, and the lady who's in charge is really working on it, but it's kind of a steep road. We're all encouraged to come to dinners or lunches and play bingo whenever we feel like it. I'll probably get around to doing that here when I get my girl off. I also went to the Pacific Power Be Watt Smart presentation. And it's awfully nice to be Watt Smart, but I couldn't afford any of the products that they thought we should have. They've got those new, you can maybe know what the name of them, the units that sit up in your, at the ceiling.
Duckless air conditioning.
What are they?
Just called duckless air conditioning.
Duckless air, duckless, but it's heating and air. And you can get an $800 rebate, so I think the price of it is somewhere around, I don't know, $9,000. So I figured, that made my monthly bill look better, actually.
That's a consideration, I am.
It was very informative. They did a really nice job, and they had great food, so, you know, it was very informative, but it's not something I think most of us can undertake.
I actually have nothing to report for the last two minutes.
Okay. Mike Warren?
In regards to economic liaison position, I did attend the Main Street Economic Development Committee meeting the other night, and there were some entrepreneurial things that are being done and discussed in the community in regards to the Main Street program that I think are very exciting, and I'm sure they'll be rolled out in the near future. They've got a meeting scheduled for the 11th of August, I believe. So there'll be more. Sherry Stewart, I noticed, and I was gonna say that maybe we should change the minutes, and I didn't do that, but her name is Stewart, I think it has it down as Stewart, but her name is Sherry Stewart with the Main Street program. But she'll be in town then, and we'll find out more about what's going on. And it's exciting to hear the different things that are happening in our community that people really want to rally around and see our community better and better. The other economic development liaison appointment that I went to was the county's economic development advisory meeting. There were several members of our community and our surrounding area that were there in regards to several topics. One was the housing situation here with the possibility of some incoming projects that we'll certainly see the need for in housing for those who are here to do construction projects or deliver. And so that was discussed pretty in-depth right now. I think it's just gonna sit idle according to the advisory board and just kind of see what those needs do and what projects do arise. The other thing that was discussed, and I had to touch on it, folks, but it's marijuana. And that was a discussion I didn't bring about, it was a discussion that the county commissioners are seeking from the advisory board members in regards to what to do, something this council has never taken into consideration with the recent declaration by the state of Oregon to allow us to opt-out if we so desire as a council, because our county did vote, I believe, over 55% against recreational marijuana. So I think the county commissioners, we have an interest that here, we've always talked about medicinal marijuana. And so I guess we've got that on the horizon perhaps that we should address, but in the meeting, the county commissioners still have a moratorium, and I don't know how that enacted. We were told ours had to end by, hey, first, and that was it. They still have one going. And that moratorium is set to expire, I think, in the month of August, and so they're trying to decide whether they want to continue with a moratorium or just opt-out.
On medical?
No, 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 there's only one opt-out now, and that's on recreational, that's Measure 91. That's what the state legislature legislature gave us. They didn't give us any opt-out on medicinal. They gave us an opt-out on recreational marijuana that was approved by the state of Oregon. So that's something that the county commissioners are gonna have to decide. And so they've asked for input from the advisory committee or board. I was in attendance, Ray was in attendance, we're members of that, and the support was shown to not opt-out, that with the economic availability that is on the horizon for people that are saying that they want to invest in our community in a legal industry, that the recommendation to the county commissioners would be not to opt-out of the Measure 91 recreational marijuana platform. As I said, it's not my platform, I'm not advocating or saying anything against it right now, but it's something that we certainly have an obligation to look at if we show so desire, but the county commissioners are looking at that, and I attended that, and that's what they had going in their economic development, so I just wanted to bring that up for us.
Good. It's something we will need to discuss, yeah.
But if they opt-out, that is not a question for us.
It has no control over us, we're a different government. We're a different government than them.
I thought that they took precedence.
They take no precedence over us whatsoever. We're a town government, and they are county government, so they have precedence, so they follow people.
Right. The town has its own option.
The city of Pageville have their own.
But bear in mind that we'd like to be consistent, that all jurisdictions would like to be consistent, because, let me finish here, Mike, because if you're not, then I think you're both self-defeating whatever you want to accomplish.
So the cops said if you lie, and... Pardon? Okay, Mike, anything else?
I think that's it right now.
Okay, thank you. Ray?
A couple things. Mike brought it up, but I guess, do you want to schedule a work session to discuss the marijuana policies, you know, what the states, the options that are out there, you know, there's various things that I think probably we need to look at.
You do.
With regards to it, you know, one of them is assuming, if there is no opt-out, that there is a requirement to opt-in as far as local taxes, if you choose to do that, you actually have to take an action with regards to that. So, there's a number of issues around it. I suggest maybe if you want to schedule that, you know, you've got 180 days from when it was passed, which was late June. I'm not sure what the actual effective date is, but whether it was June 24th when it was passed, or it's 30 days after the approval, or how that works.
Well, it's a date in December.
I think it's the 24th of December, so you've got till then to make some decisions. So, you know, we'd like to have a work session would be the question on the 11th, yeah, the 11th would be your next council meeting, to discuss those, you know, that whole arena of various topics. A question for you, I guess, the other one is, we also need to do, we've talked about it before, we need to have, we need to update our air quality ordinance, as we were kind of discussing before the meeting started, just talking about the Woodstone Changeout Program, and it was going to roll out this summer, the monies that's available in Lake and Clamton County. You know, along with that, it's a two-year program, and we probably need to extend our moratorium on allowing sole source exemptions for another year while that program has a chance to work. And there might be a couple other things to talk about, such as pellet stoves and so forth with the ordinance. So, that maybe needs to be a second work session. I don't want to crowd too many things together, but that's coming up. I guess the other thing I wanted to just bring you up to date with or make you aware of is I've been talking with Jackie at the pool, Jackie Garner, our pool manager, and you know, there's basketball camps and volleyball camps and every other camp in the world through the summer. We're thinking about, actually, I think it's a good idea, and I told her I thought we should go forward with it, is have what we're calling a swim camp. It won't be a camp as in going someplace and camping, but it would be, in the mornings, swim team usually uses the pool from 7:00 to 9:00 in the morning, 7:00 to camp. We're thinking about having a pool, we're called Swim Camp, from 7:00 to 9:00 in the morning. It'll be for people, it won't be swim lessons, it'll be water safety, water survival techniques using some of our local law enforcement, search and rescue personnel, people like that, to teach some things about water safety and water rescue and so forth for a five-day course the third week of August. So, if there's no objections, they're gonna have, it'll be a way to try to create some interest in the pool and keep things going during that period of time.
Doesn't that overlap the time that you said the swim team was there?
Swim team actually is, this is...
This is their last?
This is their last week. Because swim team season's over, so this will be...
The final swim tournament is this coming weekend, so then they are done.
They had an exercise last night that seemed to have gone pretty well. And they had, they had state police, sheriff, police, and the emergency services people there, and they did drills on putting somebody on a backboard and working it, so that it was educational for not only the kids who've already gone through it to a degree, but almost a little scenario on it. So, yeah, I think that should be...
We thought we would try it, see if we created some interest, you know, if we saved one life, you know, it was worth it.
I think it's a good idea.
Or one injury, so. Anyway, that's my update. Thank you.
Any other updates for us?
Amy? I did attend the air quality coordinator meeting in mid last week, and it was, we talked about the program that Ray was just discussing with the Woodstone Changeout Program, and just went over different towns and different ways that they deal with their air quality, and it was really nice. I really enjoyed it.
Okay, thank you. So, we have, moving on, no old business, so we'll go with new business. We have a letter from Lou Creel, Lakeview, wanting permission to plant two maple trees in the median area on the west side of their house. Does everyone have a chance to look at that?
Just an update, I asked her to give us some information on just exactly what kind of maple tree, are they small, or a middle maple tree, or a large maple tree, or whatever, and I just got some information from her today, so I think maybe we ought to put that off until your next meeting, and let's look at what she's proposing as far as the kinds of trees. To me, like, they're awfully big for the planters, quite honestly. So, we probably need to postpone that.
All right. We will put that on our next agenda. And mayor vacancy. John?
Let me comment. There was a remark in the paper, as you know, I didn't attend the last meeting, but there was a remark in the paper that indicated that our charter was confusing on this issue of when a mayor resigns and when a council resides, what procedure. And I just want to tell you, it really isn't confusing if you take the time to read it, and I'm referring specifically to Chapter 7, Section 30 of the town's charter. Essentially, there are two scenarios, and depending upon how the vacancy in office is created dictates which scenario you can file. Under Section 30, Sub A, it says the mayor or the council office becomes immediately vacant, and the operative word is immediately, upon the incumbent's death, incompetence, and so forth, and there's four scenarios. Then if you read B, it says upon declaration by the council after the incumbent's resignation and so forth. So, Sub A requires an immediate declaration of vacancy. Sub B says it doesn't become vacant until the council declares it vacant. Now, case in point was in 2008 when Mayor Watson resigned, and we had this very discussion. We were under Sub B because we were dealing with a resignation. The council really didn't want to prejudice the upcoming election in November. And so what the council elected to do was not to declare vacancy until such time as the election dictated who the winner was gonna be. Mayor Patrick won that election, and we immediately appointed him in November of 2008. Here, the situation is substantially different, because we're not dealing with a four or five-month period, we're dealing with, we're dealing with 15 months, 15 months. And I don't think it would be wise for the council to play out the same scenario that occurred in 2008 due to time difference. So, what I'm saying is, if you, I think you need to make an appointment because of the length of the unexpired term that we're dealing with. And secondly, before doing that, under Section 30 of Chapter 7 of the charter, you need to declare the position vacant.
We did that at our last meeting.
Okay, all right, so you've taken care of that secret step.
We have done that, yes.
All right, so you can go for, if you're so inclined, to make the, go through the appointment process with the understanding that the appointment is only until December 30th, 31st of 2016, and there's a general election for town officers in November of 2016. So, that's where you are. I think maybe you all knew that, but I just wanted to clarify it again. So, thank you.
That comment about being unclear was probably attributable to me, because I guess I thought that maybe there could have been more direction as to precisely how you go about making the selection, I guess, but it is clear about what to do in case of things. So my mistake.
Well, let me answer that. Filling vacancies, Section 31 of the same chapter, a mayor/council vacancy will be filled by appointment of the majority of remaining council members. Okay? Well, that's where you are. Pretty clear.
I don't know what I misunderstood.
Okay. Well, we have two candidates, so any discussion?
Yes, I'm the person that called Mike yesterday with people in homes and spoke to me on the street. Not many people come to me, having been a town councilman for about four years now. There are very few people that actually come to me. And the two individuals that came to me and talked about the long hair are older, and by older, I mean even older than I. So, yeah, no.
Excuse me.
I know. It wasn't you. The other older person. And they were concerned, you know, about appearance of going out of town to represent Lakeview, and they had a concern. And so I told Michael about that. And, yeah, and then the other three were people that were vehemently opposed to any kind of medical marijuana dispensary in town. And even though we as a council did vote to go ahead with the 500 feet... And even though we, as a council, did vote to go ahead with the 500 feet from churches and schools and all that kind of thing, it did pass. A lot of it was felt because of the fact that the state of Oregon was pretty much forcing us, rather than that was our true belief in marijuana situations as it was. But it was I that called Mike and told him what was going on. I'd also mentioned, again, that I was still a little put off about the fact that he did leave that one work session where tempers did flare, and that I really did not consider that to be the type of behavior that was acceptable in a manner. Thank you.
Let's just get to it. I move that we appoint our council president, Sandy Wenzel, to serve interim mayor for the duration of Mike Patrick's term.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
I will abstain from the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So does that motion carry then?
Yeah, Sherry Stewart.
So, motion carries by a vote of two to one.
So it's clear, Sandy, that you'll then serve for December 31st of 2016?
That is correct.
Thank you.
And I want to say that I don't agree with these comments about hair and dress and blah, blah, blah. And I also strongly support the medical marijuana, so.
So it goes.
And the support of dispensaries, probably here, and also...
Once again, I would go ahead and say, for, I realize we've already done already, and that's fine, I can live with that, but I would once again say that I have a desire to serve as our town mayor, and I will run in the 2016 election. And that's why I'd ask to fulfill that position at this point, as I pointed out in the last meeting, for continuity sake, rather than a piecemeal where we're at right now, where we have terms fulfilled, and so that's where we'll be in another, you know, because I did hear you, Sandy, guarantee me that you would not be pursuing it in 2016. Now, that's...
I have said that, yes, because I just feel like I've served for a number of years. I think there's people that, I'm going, not going down in age, I'm going up, so I might be retired in 2016.
I guess this is a question for you or for Mr. Bogartis. Do you, at this time, elect a new council president?
I think we can't vote on something if it's not on the agenda.
Well, first, it wasn't on the agenda, and then, second, I guess, then you probably, you'll need to have some discussion about how you want to go about that process of filling the rest of your council, like, because maybe that doesn't matter in this council president.
Well, the process is, number one, it needs to be on the agenda, and when you're inclined to, again, declare the vacancy, and this goes back to Sub B of Chapter 7 of Section 30, you're back in the same situation as you're so of Mike Patrick's resignation.
So you need to declare a council position.
Yeah, you would resign your position as councillor and accepting the mayor's position. The council then declares it a vacancy and proceed to make an appointment based upon, typically what they've done in the past, they've advertised the vacancy in the newspaper expressing letters of interest. I know that we've received one or two letters, and that's the process. And when the public has been advised of the vacancy for whatever you deem to be a reasonable period of time, then you make your appointment.
Is that something we can do today? It's...
No, it's not. It has not been on the agenda.
We have, we can discuss it, but we can't vote on something that's not on the agenda.
But the mayoral position caused that candidacy to yield.
Well, we still can't vote on it because it hasn't...
No, not...
What is your question? I guess I'm not...
You really can't even discuss it. It needs to be entered on the agenda as councillor wages. Right?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So, any other questions, comments? With that, we will close the meeting at 4:35.